Welcome, everyone. We are just waiting for everyone to get here. There's Dr. Nguyen and. So bear with us just a moment as we get everybody here. Just going to go another minute or two while we wait for some others to arrive. We'll begin in just a few moments. Thank you for your patience. I do see Mr. Charny or Dr. Charny is here. All right, Mrs. O'Donnell, I think we're ready to start if you want to begin.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act. And that advanced notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat. And sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Amwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard as shown on the agenda. Please stand for the flag salute. Okay. Let's see, so we have Mr. Davidson.
Here.
Mrs. Hughes.
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Panico. Dr. Charny.
Here.
Try again, Dr. Charny. I'm sorry, we're working on the volume.
Here. Do you hear me?
Dr. Nguyen.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the regular minutes of the June 22, 2021 meeting? So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
I have to do a roll call again.
Okay.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes.
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Dr. Charny.
Yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and for correspondence, we've received one correspondence for tonight's meeting. And now we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. O'Donnell and everyone. We have just a few items to go through tonight and some quick things to give some some preview on. And I want to start by sharing that the day after our last board meeting, we had a wonderful graduation ceremony for the class of 2021. Many of the board members were present, and I thank you for that. I also want to thank all of the staff and administration, especially our operations crew for all their assistance and the transportation department for coordinating shuttles for our attendees. We also had a group of parents putting up signs and helping us out early that morning for for making it a special day for the graduates, and they deserve thanks as well. And for those in that parent group who've graduated their last at Central know that we'll remember and miss your partnership. I also want to put in a quick word of thanks to Mother Nature as well, despite a little wind and a spritz here and there. We we had a beautiful day, and if you were able to see our video, Mrs. Tucker and her folks did a beautiful livestream of the event. If you couldn't join us on the fields, but it's also available on our YouTube channel as well. So it felt wonderful to be out there with that class who hadn't really had the opportunity to come together in that way for quite some time. Back in November, Mr. Estrada, one of our vice principals, reported on our HIB self-assessment, which awarded 74 points to our harassment intimidation and bullying procedures. It's a rubric from the state. It's out of 78 points. And each year in the fall, we report on the results of our self-assessment. So back in November, Mr. Estrada did that report. 52 points are required to pass that self-assessment. So we're well, we're well above that line. We received word from the state that they've confirmed our self-assessments and that the state's report now is as well as the slides from Mr. Estrada's November report are posted to our website. If you look under the Quick Links menu on our website and go to the HIB info and district grade report, you'll see those items posted online. So it's Mr. Estrada's slides from Mr. Estrada's presentation back in November, and then the state report confirming our self-assessment score. As we start to think, well, not start to think, continue certainly to think about opening in September, planning continues for a safe opening in line with the priorities that I shared in my report last month. Our region has slipped from green to yellow in the state's weekly report, which signifies a little bit of an increase in cases, but that's primarily due right now to conditions in Somerset and Mercer Counties, which make up the rest of our region. We're grouped with those two counties. We continue to be thankful for our partnerships with Hundred and Medical Center and the County Department of Health and with partner districts across the county as we do our planning for what is shaping up hopefully to be a quite normal opening in September. I'll share much more in August as that work comes to comes to a head. Kudos to our curriculum office and to our student services office. That's Jessica Cangelosie-Hayden, Dr. Carol Webb, and their teams for successful kickoff to our summer programs. Almost 300 seats are filled in those programs, making for a pretty lively campus on any given day here, Monday through Thursday. And I got to say, it feels wonderful again to have students on campus, working with teachers and to feel that energy on campus again. We had a growing number of students on campus through the spring, of course, but there are so many hopeful signals right now that it's hard not to have a smile on your face as you walk campus. Our extended school year students in the garden, all sorts of really nice things. I want to thank Lynn Gottske and our partners, other partners at School Based as well. They've been running tours across campus for rising ninth graders, and we have over 200 who are scheduled to take part in that program from School Based over the course of the summer. Orientation planning has gone underway as well. In fact, Mr. Brand and I were just talking about that again this morning for the second from. Well, it's not just our ninth graders. We're admiring the fact that a larger number of students may be among the group of students who have only had limited time on campus since beginning school here as ninth graders. And it strikes me that three of our classes starting in September have had some interrupted experience here at Central from our current juniors when they were freshmen was was March of 2020. Our 10th graders were freshmen last year, and now our ninth graders, our rising ninth graders are coming potentially back to school after after a long time with the pandemic. So we have a lot of work to do and a lot of plans on how to orient and reorient everybody to campus. And I'll ask Mr. Brand to share more next month. He doesn't know that yet, but I just just let him know. Summer projects as well, from the second phase of our IMC to additional hallway bench seating and a lot more. It's a busy summer for our facilities as well. You can see right up above us here where they're replacing a lot of the ceiling tiles and lighting here in the commons. So everything right now is running on schedule, and we're real pleased about that. I know Mr. Thornton is real pleased about that. And we'll do a tour for the board as we traditionally do in August as we near the end of our summer facilities projects. And so that, Mrs. O'Donnell, is the conclusion of my report tonight. So I appreciate everyone's continued support and also you know, all of all of our work over the summer, you know, it still is very busy around here with our facilities and other projects. So I'm appreciative of everyone's work this summer to make all those programs and projects successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Okay, so now we move to the residence forum. The opportunity for public comment on questions will be provided at every regular meeting of the Board of Education and will appear on the agenda as residence forum. Two will appear on each agenda, one near the beginning for questions or comments on agenda action items, and one near the end for general comments or questions. A residence forum will be a maximum of 30 minutes in length unless there are unusual circumstances. Residents were invited to submit written comments on the form that was open and available on the district website up until the start of this residence forum. Residents may also comment live during the meeting if they raise their hand in Zoom, press star nine on their phone, or move to the podium if they are attending in person. Residents will be recognized by the board president when it is their turn to speak. Those participating by phone will press star six to unmute when they are invited to speak. Comments submitted in writing will be read first, and live comments will be received as the 30-minute time permits. Residents must provide their name and municipality for both written and live comments. Residents participating in public comments will be listed in the official minutes. Those appearing at a residence forum will be allowed three minutes to speak, and no one will be allowed to speak twice at the same forum until all those wishing to speak have had their turn. The board may not respond to the speakers at the time of their appearance. Okay.
We have the one online comment. Do you want to read that, or do you want me to read them?
Do I read the?
Yeah, so we have a comment from Barbara Satshow of To Glenway Drive. And the comment.
She writes, "I am very much opposed to critical race theory training. I believe it does have a Marxist connotation and believe it sets up America to be a divisive hate-filled nation. No nation can survive with such hate-filled, race-filled fixations and pronouncements. I note that when the public finds out what is going on in schools with this affliction, it is outraged, and that is happening all over this nation. I note that the sneakiness of the introduction of elements of critical race theory has prevented most public from knowing much about it. I think all of us need to see outlined exactly what was taught in Hundred and Regional High School. Keeping it a secret is obviously wrong and encourages sneakiness, duplicity. All of us want open government, and that includes knowing what is being taught to our youth. We all pay taxes, and we need to have open government at this high school, and when the public questions teaching practices, it should be open to the public." And that's the conclusion of that comment.
I don't see any hands up in Zoom. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on items on the agenda? Okay.
Okay, since we don't have any any comments in person, we'll move to committee reports. First, here from Student Life and Program Committee.
Who's that? Jeff, Dr. Charny, are you doing that?
Yes. I do have a comment or question. Do we teach critical race theory? Because that is a specific graduate research theory. Do we teach it in our high school?
No, and I continue to be, I guess, a bit confused about what it means to teach it. It's a research framework from what I understand, what I've seen coming out of critical theory. I do also want to point out that on our website, everything that we've done in terms of training, everything that we've done in terms of study of disproportionality and the recommendations that we're making to address different bias concerns as well as concerns about equity of access to our programs. It's all outlined on our website on the Equity, Racism, and Diversity page under Quick Links. It's all there. So if if there are folks who are concerned about critical race theory sort of being taught in our classes or anything along those lines, then I would urge them to really dive into that webpage and those materials and point out specifically where those concerns might be. But Dr. Charny, no, I don't like I can't say that our teachers are teaching critical race theory to our children.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question, and I'd just like to echo what Dr. Moore just just outlined. Because the information is on the website, and there's really such a great addition that outlines the work being done. So I think the benefit of that is we can be clear about what is and what isn't happening. So again, really encourage anyone who has any question or you know, an issue with it to definitely go and look at what it is and what it isn't. Okay, so who's doing the report?
Dr. Charny, Mr. Richard is doing the report. All right, floor is yours.
Thank you. So Student Life Committee met last Monday. We have several items for action tonight. Item 1.01 refers to tuition and transportation. Ms. Cangelosie-Hayden provided information to the committee about the tuition and transportation contracts. Are these all are placements of existing students in existing external placements. Details are available for the public and for the board in Board Docs. Action 1.02 Professional Development Plan and Mentoring Plan Statement of Assurances. The committee reviewed the goals of the 2021 to 2022 District Professional Development Plan. Goals include initiatives pertaining to the strategic plan priorities, diversity, equity, and inclusion, social, emotional learning, and trauma-informed practices, as well as technology and innovative use of instructional technology. Additional documents in support of this action are available in Board Docs. Policies for first reading. The committee discussed the policies. Most policies include revisions such as name or nomenclature changes. The committee discussed policy 2431 on athletic competition in more depth as it pertains to home-school student participation. Dr. Moore explained that the district receives inquiries each year for home-school students to participate in athletics. In the past, the district has had a policy that prohibits home-school students from participating. Dr. Moore is recommending that the district allow home-school students to participate. He communicated that first the district had a reminder this year about how important extracurricular participation participation is for many students, especially those who are removed from the social aspects of school. Dr. Moore explained that this could be considered a service, and home-school students' families still pay taxes for public school services. Second, Dr. Moore noted that allowing home-school students to participate in athletics will keep them connected to the school community and may result in home-school students returning to the district. Additionally, some athletic teams would benefit from the participation of home-school students. For example, the girls' bowling team. Dr. Moore noted that this is allowed widely in the county. Both Delaware Valley Regional High School District and South Hundredan allow home students to participate. At the North Hundred and Voorhees Regional School District is in the process of approving a revised policy. Again, details are available in Board Docs. Action 1.04 Corporate Sponsor Program. Ms. Cangelosie-Hayden provided information to the committee about the district's corporate sponsor program. This program provides valuable advertising exposure to target customers at the high schools' athletic events and competitions throughout the school year. It also provides the district with the revenue needed to supply continued programs for our students while reducing costs to local taxpayers. 1.05 is the Nursing Services Plan. This is an annual requirement requiring board approval. Details are available in Board Docs. 1.06 involves a new student activities club. Mr. Brand provided information to the committee about the proposed Students Against Racism Club. He explained that this club was proposed by a group of students to directly focus on anti-racism without specifically naming any race or affinity group. The club will create an interactive, safe space for students to openly discuss racism. We also discussed a few other items. Number one, and these are not actionable items, but they were on our discussion nonetheless. One involves grading principles. Progress attachments are in the Board Docs meeting agenda. And it involves an explanation as to what our grading principles will be guided by moving forward. One that really excited me, an item involved teacher evaluation instrument modification information. This involves a modification of the Danielson Framework by which teacher performance is judged in the district. The committee reviewed the modifications to valuation instrument and discussed the training and calibration of the instrument. There were also the the department highlights and shout-outs and the IMCB BOE stats, which are all available on the Board Docs meeting agenda. And that's it from the Student Life Committee, and so I would like to move 1.01 to 1.06 for approval tonight.
Second. Okay, so moved. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes.
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Yes.
This Dr. Charny.
Yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you for that report. Next, we have Operations and Transportation Committee.
Operations and Transportation Committee met on site here last Tuesday. We had a chance to go over the progress of the school construction projects, including being able to take a look at the progress for Phase Two of the IMC. Couple of items on the agenda of note, we are looking to approve Dr. Moore's recommendation to waive activity participation fee for any clubs and sports. We are looking to authorize the application and acceptance of the 2122 Schools Health Insurance Fund Wellness Grant in an amount not to exceed $5,000, which will provide all staff members the opportunity for health and wellness activities. We have four policies on first reading, just like Student Life and Program. There's some tweaks made to board member resignation and removal, political contributions, school district travel, and procurement procedures for school nutrition programs. Looking to accept from the 2021 extracurricular aid from the state of New Jersey in the amount of over $805,000 for special education student excess costs. This extraordinary aid is actually an increase of over $205,000 from the previous year. Lastly, we're looking to accept the from 2021 non-public transportation reimbursement aid from the state of New Jersey in the amount of $36,830 for transportation of non-public school students. This is actually, we didn't receive any last year, so this is in addition to that. Or, and right, we're looking to accept that. So on that, I'd like to move items G1 through G12.
Second. Any discussion?
Just share a couple of quick points. First, I'm real pleased for the opportunity to apply for this shift wellness grant. The the School Health Insurance Fund is our, what are they, Jimlyn? Are they are? Are they're not our carrier? What are they? Our processor. And so they're offering money to districts for staff wellness projects, and we certainly understand staff wellness along with the wellness of everyone else affiliated with our school as a priority coming into this school year. Everyone's disruption over the past 18 months needs needs attention, certainly, and I'm looking forward to and hopeful for the support of our shift as we move to create wellness projects throughout the year with them and with the help of our staff members as well. So that's a that's a great opportunity. Also want to point out again, this will be the second year that I'm recommending that we not list any activities for pay-to-participate fees. I do think that we do all right without that revenue, and even though it does mean a little bit of a loss of revenue for us, I do believe that it's it's how it how it can potentially serve as a barrier to participation outweighs the benefits that we get from it. So so I'm again recommending for this coming school year, no pay-to-participate fee for our our students and their families.
Okay, so can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes.
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Dr. Charny.
Yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you for that report, Scott. And can we hear from the Personnel Committee?
Thank you, Noel. Personnel met virtually on July 16. We spent some time discussing several open administrative positions we have. We then went through the agenda, which is a long one, as you could see by the size of the agenda, so I'm just going to highlight a few items to not go through them all. We have five resignations, two of which you'll see later on the agenda for appointments in new positions. We have the appointment of substitute teachers for next school year along with substitute secretaries. We have the approval of summer work hours for some of our counselors, mostly for scheduling, fall scheduling. We have a lot of summer curriculum work and professional workshops. We have a motion to approve hourly rates for some of our teachers who have helped our students and continue to help our students over the summer for some credit completion work for some loss of credits this past school year. We have the rest of our Schedule C advisors and Schedule D coaches for next school year. We also have a motion to approve several cohorts for our staff, one for Aspire and another opportunity with the Reddington K-8 district. We're abolishing two programmer analyst positions in the IT department, both folks who have retired those positions, and we're creating a new position just below that for a database administrator in that department. We are also abolishing five policies which relate to the Federal Families First Coronavirus Act, which has expired. And then we have first read on several policies which include some cleanup languages from code changes with no substantive changes in those policies. And lastly, we have an agreement with the HCEA to allow for co-presidents Megan Augusta and Matt Smoker for the upcoming school year. And with that, I would like to move H1 through H32.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just a quick note on the the agreement at the end with HCEA. And just to clarify a tiny, tiny bit, the the contract that we currently have with HCEA, and this is the last year of that contract, only really imagines one president in its language. So we are really pleased to have come to, you know, some So we are really pleased to have come to, you know, some quick agreements with the new administration there. Megan and Matt are co-presidents to just iron out that contract language for this, this situation of having two presidents instead of one. I do also want to say our conversations have been, have been really good. So as we tackle big things like reopening in September, as we tackle next year being a negotiations year with the HCA, I'm really looking forward to working with Megan and Matt. And I'm also, you know, really grateful for, for all the work that we've been able to do over the past few years with Michelle Bernard as president as well. So bright days ahead, I'm sure.
Okay.
Man Vice President, I do have a question.
Yes.
Is pertaining to the summer curriculum writing with Aspire Biology. What exactly is that?
So Aspire is our program for students who need additional support in a smaller setting. Sometimes we're talking about school phobia, or we're talking about other kinds of situations where those students kind of move through as a cohort through the day. They have different curriculum guides in each of the classes that work with those students. And so they're doing some work on, on that curriculum guide this year. So Aspire is the name of that program. And they're just going to be doing some work on the biology course that they offer to the students in that program.
And do we have an Aspire curriculum for every science and ELA, for example? Or is it just select courses?
We have curriculum guides across all of the courses that are offered there. But what I'll do, Dr. Charney, is I'll get some additional information about that from Miss Cangelosie-Hay, and I'll share that with you. I don't want to misspeak. I'm not sure if every single course has an Aspire correlate. There may be certain courses that aren't yet written or aren't yet available in that program for those students.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, without any further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Pardon me. Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Dr. Wen?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And let's see, now, do we have any additional business, any additional board business at this time? Okay. Hearing none. We could move to our second residence forum. Did I read this whole thing again? Okay. Residents were invited to submit written comments on the form that was given, on the form that was open and available on the district website up until the start of this residence forum. Residents may also comment live during the meeting. If they raise their hand in a Zoom, press star nine on their phone, or move to the podium if they are attending in person. Residents will be recognized by the board president when it is their turn to speak. Those participating by phone will press star six to unmute when they are invited to speak. Comments submitted in writing will be read first and live comments will be received as the 30-minute time permits. Residents must provide their name and municipality for both written and live comments. Residents participating in public comments will be listed in the official minutes. Those appearing at a residence forum will be allowed three minutes to speak, and no one will be allowed to speak twice at the same forum until all those wishing to speak have had their turn. And the board may not respond to speakers at the time of their appearance. So.
We have no comments from our online forum, but I do see a hand up in the attendee pool. And it's a phone number ending in 0750, so I'm going to push the button to allow this person to talk, if that's okay.
Okay.
And just remember, you need to press star six to unmute. So you are now able to talk, but do press star six. There you go. It looks like you're okay.
Yeah, this is Barbara Sasha from Martin Township. I did have some comments on the very quick meeting that is being held tonight. I do think that maybe we should go into some of those items a little bit more than, like, we rushed over 32 items in five minutes. That seems, seems like a very, and so where is the background on all those 32 items? I mean, we just spent such a short amount of time. So for the public trying to call in to become, or go there to become informed on what's going on in the school, you certainly can't glean much from a five-minute talk on 32 items. That seems so, and then, and then no, no board member had a comment tonight either. I mean, I can understand you want to get out, but, and have short meetings, but it certainly doesn't lend too much outreach to the public. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anyone else?
Anyone present? Okay. I don't see any more hands up, Mrs. O'Donnell.
Okay. Okay, um, so can I have a motion and a second to move to executive session? So move. All in favor? Okay.
So we have, we have items, we have a student item and also a negotiations item. And we'll move down the hall, not to our normal 700 room, they're waxing the floor there. We're going to continue on down the hallway to, what's the room? 718, I think. Yeah, follow Mr. Brand. About a half an hour, and I don't think there'll be any action when we come back. So, Mr. Klein, I'm going to make you the host now so that I can sign off. Thank you. So we'll be back in a little bit to conclude.
Okay, can I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
We might need to do it again? Yes, okay. Can we have a motion to return to open session?
Moved.
Second.
Okay. Do we need a roll call for that?
We're in executive session. We discussed HCEA negotiations and a hit matter.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're done.
Thank you.
Oh, nice job.